Welcome, everyone, to the June 25 Eugene City Council Meeting. Welcome to those at home and here on the phone. We have Counselors Alenka. Is Counselor Evans there, too?
Yep, I'm here, Mayor.
Okay, we've got two counselors on the phone. So first up, we have Counselors Alenka and Counselor Evans have put a motion in front of you. Which one of you wants to speak to this?
I can read it, Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Evans?
The motion is, Mayor shall appoint a food task force for the following purposes. One, compile and summarize recent food system. Two, build off this past work, identify gaps in the analysis, information, policies, actions, tools, and funding necessary to create a comprehensive regional food system strategy. This strategy should also address integration and collaboration within the food sector, long-term resilience to climate change, rising fossil fuel prices, and natural hazards. Equitable access to healthy food and food security. Common metrics for measuring the quality of the regional food system. Make recommendations that focus on enhancing the economic development and job creation opportunities in the food sector, improving the environment, and increasing equity. The task force should complete this work within 12 months of their first meeting. Task force should have no more than 11 community members, including -- should include, to the extent, practical following organizations. City of Eugene, County, City of Springfield, NEDCO, Willamette Farm and Food Coalition, Lane Food Council, Eugene Farmers Market, Sustainability Commission, Food for Lane County.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
And one other one, number 10 would be the Human Rights Commission.
Oh, so you added one to that list?
One to that, Mayor.
And you're okay with that, Counselors Alenka?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Now, this is your opportunity to speak to this, both of you, if you want to. Either one of you want to speak to it?
I'll let Allen go ahead, and I can follow up.
Okay. Well, you know, a lot of work has actually occurred already in the community with respect to the food sector and its role in the economy. In fact, the council has adopted a goal to create a food security plan, which we've worked on. Lane County's done a lot of market analysis, and many of the entities that are listed in that group of people participating or groups participating have done different kinds of studies. And then recently, Counselor Evans and then representatives from the City of Eugene, Babe O'Sullivan, and Lane County, and Willamette Farm Food Coalition, NEDCO, and other folks went to a Sustainable Community Leadership Academy on Urban Agriculture and Sustainable Food Systems back in Memphis last year. And that trip really coalesced the thinking of a lot of people into what the next step should be to promote the food sector and the creation of a limited-duration food task force with a limited scope of work to summarize all the previous work that we've done in this area, develop that gap analysis, and make recommendations about enhancing the economic development and job creation opportunities in the sector. And that's why we put forth this motion. Fully understand the staffing issues around this, and that's why there's no start date associated with this. There is in there that it should take no more than 12 months after their first meeting, but when it starts is as we can get it started and get staff associated with it from the different jurisdictions. So there is a sense, a little bit of urgency about moving this forward since there is a potential for maybe as much as $75,000 to $150,000 in matching grants that have an application deadline at the very beginning of July. So that's why we put this forward right now in the hopes that, if passed, they could squeeze in under that deadline and potentially get that grant money to help put this together. And so that's why we're bringing it forth today.
Counselor Evans?
I totally concur with Counselors Alenka on that. I think that is long overdue to be together and be a leader in collaborating on these issues, and specifically when it comes to our ability to enhance our economic development profile with, you know, an aggressive urban agricultural program that will allow us to be self-sufficient within the Willamette Valley, but also allow us to begin to market ourselves in a more robust way throughout the state, the region, the country, and also internationally. We provide a lot of food to the Pacific Rim through the state of Oregon, and I think that Willamette, right now, Eugene is poised to address an opportunity that has long been over to -- we've been doing it with wine for years. Now we're doing it with the microbrew. We're seeing and realizing, and I think that food is the next logical step for us in economic development strategy to enhance this entire valley. And the other thing, too, is I think that we also need to be very cognizant of our food security issues. And the more local food that we can produce that comes back into the community, I think, is an incredible asset for us in terms of maintaining the food, the purity of our food, the resilience of our economy. And working with those issues, I think we'll be moving ahead like some of the other communities across the country. I know Albuquerque, Puget Sound, Boston, there are a number of other cities and communities across the country that are actively moving forward with this, and I think that we should be in the vanguard of that leadership.
Mayor, could I add one more thing to that?
No. Another round, just wait.
Okay, thanks. Putting in the round.
So I have George and Mike and Claire in the queue, but before that, I wanted to end. George Brown, I want to give city manager a chance to respond to this, too.
I'd be happy to. I think it fits with the vision of Eugene. It fits with a lot of things that we've been doing, so I have no concern with the outcome that will become of this. In fact, I think it could be a really nice outcome for us. And as Alan and I had a chance to talk about, just staffing the capacity to be able to do the work, and so I appreciate flexibility in when that 12-month starts, and so we will work. Mayor, if this passes, you'll be appointing a task force. We'll work with you on sort of timing of some things, so.
And Denny, you might want to reflect on the cluster part of this thing.
Yeah, we have been doing a lot of work very closely with Lane County. There's actually a technical resource group that we've been working on, on issues like Food Hub, we're looking at Regional Food Brand, doing some of that work. The county has been basically the lead on that work, but we've been working very closely with them.
Thank you. George, you're up.
Thank you. I respect the process that allows a counselor to bring a motion up at any given time, but in this case, I think we're moving way too fast. You know, this came out last night. This is the first that we officially have an opportunity to discuss this, although chances are, I'd probably agree with most of it. I think we're going at it the wrong way. A work session before this would have helped, would have been real helpful. You know, the county has basically put the same task force together and tasked with a majority of the same issues that this task force will be addressing, and has taken the lead on this for the last three years. At minimum, we should have had at least a presentation from that task force or our representative on that task force to bring us up to speed on exactly what they have covered so far and how it addresses the issue that Alan and Greg have brought up. You know, if we're talking a regional approach to this, I can understand the work that the county is doing should be the lead because the food production is not going to be done inside the city limits. Major food production will be done outside. If we're talking Eugene-specific, okay, but again, only after we have a full report from the existing task force with basically the same members to see what they've done. You know, the food security issue, maybe that is a Eugene-specific topic, but I don't think so. I think that's also a regional issue that we need to approach and discuss. So I'm not ruling to support the motion at this time because of, one, the process that was used to get us here, and, two, the fact that I don't want to make extra work and duplicate a lot of the effort that the county's task force has done in the last three years.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo what George said. This by nature of what was said by my colleagues, regional analysis, regional issue, I mean, he said it four times. This is a regional job, and I think we should stop acting like a regional government. This is inappropriate for us to consider at this time, as well as I'm happy that Alan had a chance to speak with the manager about when and how the staff can do it, but I haven't had that chance yet, and we haven't had a chance to talk about the construction of the committee. If this is truly a gap analysis on the economic impact, then where's the business-oriented groups on here? Because there's little to none. It's all government and nonprofit. So, I mean, we need to talk about a balanced construction of the people involved. I don't disagree with the effort, for crying out loud. I probably am more concerned about food security than many people I know. I grow enough food for the year in my own yard. I mean, this is an important issue. And I absolutely agree that it should be an important business sector for us to participate in. But the process that we've used to get to this place with this issue is inappropriate. And I'd like us to have at least a work session to talk about how we construct this group of folks and how we go about this issue. So I'm going to move to table until we've had a work session.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, no discussion. Goes right to a vote. All those in favor of tabling, please indicate. There's three here at the table.
Four.
Four. Four for tabling, and in opposition?
No.
One, two, three. Alan?
No.
Four. I'm going to support the tabling, but I would, but only if it's to a time specific.
The next available work session to clarify my motion.
Okay.
Part of that has to do with our current schedule and also making sure we get that information back from the county. I think that's a very important part of that work.
They've done a lot of this already.
I just want to say that, so that makes the tabling passes, but I want to say that I am totally in support of continuing this conversation.
Me, too.
And I totally appreciate and respect the work that Greg and Alan have done and that all the other partners have done in our area. A lot of work has been done. I think the intention is to build on that work. I think a little bit more information about how that, what's been happening and how to go from here would be helpful.
And our appropriate role.
I'm not going there, but yes.
Thank you. The only thing, reason I voted against tabling, or the main one, is the possibility of a grant, that Alan said there was a deadline.
So what I, I'm going to ask the manager about this, but since my understanding is that the food sector is already a priority for us as a region, that this wouldn't keep us from, should we have the staff to prepare a grant proposal, that this wouldn't keep us from heading down that, we don't have to pass this to make that happen.
I think that's probably true. I don't know enough about what the grant is about. Normally, what we'll do with a grant is if it requires any sort of match, we'll send that to the IGA or the IGR group, and that can be electronically, which is okay as well. So I'll talk with our staff about looking at and moving forward with a grant if we're able to do that, if it fits. So first blush, no. I just don't know enough about the grant process.
The other question I have for you, can we get this into our timeline?
I think what, it depends on what the expectation for the next work session is. If part of that is the presentation from the other entities, I don't know their availability and willingness to do something before you go on break. If it's to not have that, but just have your conversation with some information that we can bring back, knowing that it's not going to be the full piece, what we'll try to do is try to fit that in prior to your break, if that's important for the council.
Yeah, I absolutely support the idea, as I've heard everybody else around the table. I think, really, this was not about the proposal that Alan and Greg are making. I think we're all very supportive of that, and this is just a temporary suspension of it so that we can have the opportunity to talk about it, establish some parameters, talk about some goals, and some coordination elements and other things, which would be valuable. So I would encourage you to find out how soon we can learn what else is going on so that when we do bring this back to the table and work on it, which I fully expect to do, we'll have that knowledge and that ability to coordinate. Because I do think it's a good idea, but I have to agree that you want to make sure that it's, you don't just do good, you do good in the right way. So we want to follow the process on this. So I would encourage you to figure out how soon we could do that.
Going back to the queue.
Thank you. So I can live with tabling. It would be, I think, good if we could get to this before the break, if that's logistically possible. Because while I respect the fact that Lane County has had work going on on this, I do think there's some appropriate role for the city to look at this as well. While the food production may not be happening in the city, and actually, a lot of food production does happen within the city limits, we have a lot of businesses based in the city that are interacting with this market. Just some small things, wondering, so we've listed City of Eugene, obviously, it's the mayor's task force, the City of Eugene is there, but I wonder if that role could be represented through both the Sustainability Commission and the Human Rights Commission, if they're both going to be part of that. A little persnickety detail, it's the Lane County Farmers Market, not the Eugene Farmers Market, unless there's a Eugene Farmers Market I'm not aware of. And the Lane Food Council, I think their formal name is the Lane Food Policy Council, and they're not a super-active group, so definitely we'd want to check in with them, but I'm not sure that they'd be able to play a large role. So that's just some knowledge I have from my own work. Then I think definitely we'd want some, NEDCO is great, and Willamette Farm and Food Coalition definitely works with business and economic, the economic side of farming and food distribution, but I think getting some additional economic development expertise, I don't know if Lane Workforce Partnership should be there, but I think we want to look at that. And then there are definitely other regional initiatives, you know, the Rain Initiative might feed into this in some way. Well, there's lots of food-related technology. And also, you know, obviously, this is just a first report that this particular motion was asking for, but thinking beyond that to work overlapping across counties, because again, agriculture doesn't necessarily have the same boundaries as jurisdictions. So I definitely want to hear about what the Lane County task force has been up for. But I think one thing Lane County doesn't have is a Human Rights Commission and a Sustainability Commission that can really assist with some particular pieces of analysis that I think would be an enhancement to whatever Lane County is doing as well.
And George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, it may seem strange to people, perhaps, why somebody who's worked in the grocery business for 43 years, worked in the food business, knows hundreds of farmers and food producers, has a store that carries products from over 400 producers in the southern Willamette Valley and more every month, is not really enthusiastic about this. It seems like a lot of work is already done, been done, and really, you know, the farmers and the food manufacturers make their decisions, and they've been doing a great job. And I don't know that they really need our help, because they already have a whole bunch of help out there. They have themselves, they have their bankers and their investors, and they have their families, and they have OSU, a tremendous resource that they all consult regularly so that they can take their raw ingredients that are produced in the Willamette Valley and bring them to Eugene or any other town, Springfield, and safely combine them and to create a new product, sell it locally, and then eventually sell it all over the whole country. And I just, you know, I look at the 10 units that will be working on this City of Eugene, it seems like to me, like staff is already kind of maxed out on all the things that they're working on now. And we have deadlines coming up on all kinds of things. And I look forward to a deeper discussion, but I, you know, I mean, this number three, make recommendations that focus on enhancing the economic development and job creation opportunities in the food sector, it's going on right now. They're already, they don't, what I'm trying to say is they don't really need our help in that. What they can, what they can do is come to us and say, hey, look, this is a regulation that you have that's slowing us down, it's getting in our way, it's holding things up, and it's completely unnecessary, and make their case for that. But I really just don't see us intervening with people that already know how to do it. They already know what they're doing, they know what they need. I'm just a little skeptical, that's all, I guess. I just wanted to voice that.
Vinnie?
Mayor, can I get in the queue?
Yeah, you're in the second round here.
Great, thank you.
I guess my main hope is that, I'm very concerned about developing agricultural lands, about not, about the importance of not developing them. And my main hope for my task force would be recommendations not to expand the urban growth boundary onto agricultural land. I think the really important thing is that, in food security, is that we have food near us, that we're not driving all over the world or having trucks drive all over the world. And it's going to become more and more important as fuel becomes more expensive and less available, and as global warming becomes more dire, to have food near us. And that's the main part, I think. And I agree with George that a lot of things are already being done, and the farmers know what they're doing, and we're really fortunate here to have the food we have, but we need to encourage and not inhibit the local food industry. Thank you.
We have two other items on our agenda that we need to get through today very quickly. I've got one round two, and then we're going to be done. I've got Alan, Mike, and Claire. Alan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Couple of points. One, I think, I don't have a problem with what people said around the table, except for one point, which I'll get to in a second. The job potential here is really high for creating good family wage jobs in the sector by being able to promote it. There has been a lot of stuff that's been going on, and people have been working on this, which is why it's building off of that work. It's not trying to recreate it, which is why the first task is actually to summarize what's already occurred, but then figure out what needs to occur. And that's why it also has the regional partners, the people from Lane County and NEDCO and Willamette Food and Farm Coalition, things like that, are part of this thing. Where this actually comes from is the experts that have been working on this area. The folks that went to that Memphis workshop brainstormed after they got back about what needs to be done in order to move this to the next step, and that's where this really comes from. So it is actually taking into consideration the people who are working on this, what their opinions are, and putting it forth in the form of a motion. I think it's appropriate for the City of Eugene to host it and move it forward for it to happen in a timely manner, so that's why Greg and I were putting this forward now. It does have, putting on the table is more than likely going to make us miss the grant funding cycle that's this time around, but there probably is a next cycle in December, I understand.
Mike?
Well, I was hoping we were going to discuss this in a work session, that's why I gave the motion, but since we've now opened the door to who should be on and suggestions about who should be on this, we, I won't go down that road, too. But I think that's a source of discussion, because if we're going to lead this effort, how is it appropriate for us to lead a regional effort as a city government? There's the first question I think we ought to be asking. I'm not interested in further damaging our relationship with the county, who is the more appropriate body to lead a regional effort. And with this sort of thing, I think we should at least have that discussion with them. So when we're talking about when to schedule this, I think for us to go off kind of half-cocked here and say we know best without at least letting the folks who've already been working on this for a very long time at the county level sit down with us and educate us about what already has been done before we maybe look at where our part may help and what efforts from us may be helpful to the larger effort. I think we ought to know what we're talking about first and define the scope appropriately to what Eugene should be doing, rather than, again, trying to become some manner of regional government. So I certainly would not be in favor of us having a work session until we have some folks at the table who can tell us more about how to define the appropriate scope and how to pick the appropriate people based on that scope.
And we're going to finish with you, Claire.
Thanks. I just wanted to respond to some of what Counselor Brown said. I think, you know, you have knowledge that the rest of us don't have, and a task force of this kind or working with the Lane County's current task force can really help inform us and the general public about what all is going on in this sector and help us to identify where we, as a policymaking body, can reduce barriers or create new opportunities, as well as, in my mind, making sure that all the great food that's being grown here is not just packaged up and shipped out of state and not accessible to people in our own community to access and have access to healthy, affordable food. And I just also want to note that tomorrow, there is a Lane Livability Consortium event featuring a guest speaker from HUD, and the federal agencies, including, and that event is focused on community health and economic prosperity. And alongside those efforts, the USDA has identified creating and supporting local food policy councils as an appropriate role for government to really look at these sectors. You know, I think we can debate whether it's a city responsibility or goes to the county. I think that's a good conversation for us to have, but I don't think mayor's task force is overstepping those bounds in any way. This particular motion had a pretty specific charge and was not going to start dictating to anybody what they should be doing anywhere. So I look forward to the work session.
All right, then, we're going to move on to action item A, an ordinance, mending ordinance number 20508. The manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We can either provide a very short presentation or, let's start with that.
Yeah, in the spirit of time, the ordinance really provides us the time that we feel is necessary to work with the neighborhoods. At the last work session on MPT, we got direction from council to reach out to the neighborhoods. We've done that. We've had a couple of meetings. We have another one tonight. We've done online surveys and so forth. Generally speaking, it doesn't feel like MPT is, or the neighborhoods are really ready for MPT in the neighborhoods without some additional work. And those, that work really has to do with how those more dense corridors transition into their neighborhood. So our sense is that, especially for those new MPT areas, we need more time and more work with the neighborhood.
Put the motion on the table?
Yes. I move to adopt Council Bill 5122, an ordinance to extend the program's suspension to November 30, 2014.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion? Counselor Brown?
Yeah, I'm just a little bit skeptical if we can get it done within that timeframe, personally. I mean, the way, at the rate it's going now, I see lots of open dates on the tentative agenda, but they haven't been penciled in yet, and I think we ought to, I suppose we can go ahead and pass. I am for it. I mean, obviously, we have to delay it. We're really, I feel like we're not even anywhere close to even a basic framework that we can flesh out. But, so I'll probably support this, but I just think we may have to delay it again. I would just throw that out there.
Any other questions from anyone? Ready to vote on this? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. Counselor Evans?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Zelenka?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. Eugene City Council will now meet in executive session held pursuant to ORS 1926602I to review and evaluate the performance of an employee. Representatives of the news media and designated staff will be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in an executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. We're back in our regular session, and we are discussing the evaluation of performance review of the police auditor. We're going to go around and have comments, and I'm going to start out, of course, with Alana, and then at the end, after comments, we will be glad to hear comments from you, Mark. Okay?
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilors. My name is Alana Holmes, I'm the Human Resources Director here at the city of Eugene. With me today is Denise Smith, who is a Human Resources Manager who supported the council in the, in Police Auditor Gisner's annual review. He has been here, will be here as of June 29th for five years, and so I'll turn it over to her to talk a little bit about the process before the discussion occurs.
Good afternoon, councilors and mayors. Just a quick review on the process that you went through. We supplied you with information from three points. Mark did a self-evaluation. Also, we surveyed citizen members from a list that you had generated for us with Mark. And then we also had the Citizens Review Board do an evaluation of their work with him. We supplied that to all of you, and then you each individually replied on your comments. What you have in your notebooks is a compilation of what that information is. At that point in time, if there's no questions for us from Human Resources, I'll turn it over to you to have your conversation with Police Auditor Gisner.
First of all, I just want to thank you for the work that you've done and the comprehensive way that you did it. It was very helpful. And I will start this out by just saying that I'm very pleased with the work that we get from our auditor, and I appreciate, and want to express that appreciation to him. And I want to say I think this is the most comprehensive report I think I've ever seen. Everything that anybody could possibly ask is in here. And I also wanted to say that the weekly reports we get of the cases are very helpful and informative to us and anybody who wants to read them, and I continue to appreciate that those are made available. I know they take a lot of work, but I think they're very important. And I do understand that it is still somewhat unsatisfying to the public when they can't know the outcome of sustained cases, of what happens to the sustained cases, but that is the nature of where the law is constructed. So I also want to commend you for the service improvements you keep working on all the time and with great patience, and I think they're paying off. And I also wanted to, I sent you this week, from our livability consortium work, actually, some work that's been done on outreach in minority communities, and the successful ways of reaching people, and I hope that will be helpful to you and your work to reach out to the community. And I also want to say, Mark, that I really appreciate your understanding that many, many of the people that you deal with on a regular basis are people with severe mental health issues, and that you see them because there isn't any place else for them to go, and you recognize this and want to work with people at the state level to get more mental health resources into our community, which will make everybody's job, it would be better for the folks that are affected, but it will be better for public safety in the community as well. So thank you for your good work for us, and I look forward to the year ahead. With that, I'll turn to Council Prior.
Thank you. It's really been a privilege for me, serving as Council President, to work closely with Mark, along with the Council Vice President. One of the great things is monthly meetings with the auditor, and I find those to be very helpful, very informative, and maintains a great relationship with one of our few employees that we have. I think Mark continues to maintain a strong working relationship with the chief, the police department staff, city council leadership, and you do your work in a timely fashion, and you support the Citizen Review Board effectively and efficiently. I think you maintain a cordial and respectful approach that isn't afraid to push what you believe in, but you still try to do what's in the best interest of the community and also the city. So I think our city is fortunate to have you, and I really appreciate the work you've done, and I rated you excellent, because I think that is exactly a good description of the work you've done.
Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with Chris, and also for your work this year, rate you excellent across the board. I think we're truly lucky to have you in this role, because the office and the work and the outcome that the community wanted when they voted as a charter amendment for this, for the creation of this, didn't come into fully into form and crystallize as the appropriate way to do it, do it, in my opinion, until you took the job. I think that we had pushed back previously with some of the previous occupants there, not because, you know, the police union or other folks were unreasonable about that, they were completely reasonable. It was because the people that held the office didn't have the same appropriate role envisioned for how the office ought to run. And having had the opportunity to work with you at that time closely on how you envisioned the office to run appropriately, I've seen that come to fruition and work very well now. And the fact that it runs smoothly and we don't have the level of controversy, I think, is indicative of the expertise you bring to the work, and I appreciate it very much. I appreciate that it's not just about the neutral work of making sure that investigations are done appropriately, but it's also about making our police department better by giving them the latest in opportunities for how policies ought to work. I see that in my work on the Police Commission now for five years, several of the recommendations that you've made about how our policies could be crafted a little bit better, tweaked, as it were, in order to create a better outcome with the department and with their work in the community. So again, I really think we're very fortunate to have you, and I appreciate the work you've done this year. Good job, sir.
Councilor Poling?
Thank you. I could not disagree in the least with what Chris and Mike just said. To make it real quick and simple, I'm just going to read what I wrote from my comments, and that is, once again, this past year, Mark has performed his duties as the city police auditor to the highest level of proficiency without any deficiencies, while meeting all the aspects outlined in the listed six dimensions. I could spend time and effort going over the individual subcategories, but thought it is simpler just to express my gratitude in the professional manner in which Mark goes about his day-to-day assignments, maintaining the highest degree of integrity and honesty in dealing with all elements of our organization and the community. Manages his office and budget in the highest degree, as well as maintains an excellent working relationship with the civilian review board, police department, the union representing the police employees, the general community, and the council. The city of Eugene is extremely fortunate to have Mark as the police auditor, and it is my belief that he is the reason the Office of Police Auditor is so successful.
Thank you, George. And George Brown?
Thanks. I think I'll just kind of read through mine and extemporize a little bit. Mark and the dedicated crew at the Police Auditor's office continue to capably monitor in a neutral manner the investigations of complaints against the police, continue to inform the public of the police auditor's role, fully inform the council of the progress and resolution of all complaints filed, and share best policing practices and policing problems from around the country with council and the police department. And the reports are outstanding, and I just give you a very, very good rating. Thanks.
Councilor Taylor?
Thank you. I think the fact that the police have finally accepted that we have an auditor is a good thing. I have a suggestion, I appreciate the reports also, I said that in my written material, but I think more contact with neighborhood groups might be a good thing. And I know that Mark works very hard, and I know, I remember when we met with him when I was council officer, that I could tell that he's putting in a lot of time. But I think as it becomes possible, it would be good to meet with individual neighborhood groups and have well-publicized, previously well-publicized meetings, so that people who do want to know something or who have a concern could attend and talk to Mark. And I know that takes time, but one little at a time, maybe. Thank you.
Councilor Zelenka?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the Police Auditor Office is an incredibly important office for us to have in the city of Eugene to increase the public's confidence in EPD and the way that we do policing in this community. And I share Mark's frustration with Oregon laws and the lack of transparency, but in terms of outcomes of personnel actions, but it's a balance between the public's right to know and the respect of individual rights, and the Oregon law falls on the individual rights, which I can understand and respect. I think, Mark, you've done an excellent job, and I hope you stay here a long time. I don't have any issues with your performance. It took a while for the police union to accept that the office was necessary, and now that they have accepted it, I think it's in part because of the way you have transformed the office, and the way that you do your job with grace and professionalism, and maintaining an independent viewpoint, asking those tough questions and making those tough calls that may not always be popular, but also working with EPD and not doing things to them. And I think that whole perspective and the way that you do your job has transformed the office, and hats off to you, and that's a credit to you and your office and the people that work in your office. The one area... The one area I think that, that I would like to see you focus on over the next year, and you can comment on this, because apparently you've got something in the works, but is more outreach to communities of color and to neighborhoods. I think that those two particular areas, you've, you've attempted to do that, I've seen you at some of my neighborhoods in my ward, and, and I think continuing to do that and working with the communities of color, that would be a very important next step to make the office do even better. So, excellent job. Thank you.
Council Evans.
Thanks, Mayor. Now that Alan's stolen my thunder.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Thanks, Alan. Mark, you've done an excellent job. I'm really continually impressed with the thoroughness and the depth of your reporting to council. I think that you've built excellent relationships with the police department, and really truly have built, for the most part, excellent relationships with the general community. Again, I would underscore Alan's earlier comment about, you know, having a more engaged strategy, as you've already mentioned before, about interacting with communities of color. But other than that, I think that you have done an outstanding job, a great job, and I'm really pleased, and I think that we're very blessed to have you here at the City of Eugene.
Council Saret.
Thank you. Yeah, I concur with many of the comments of my colleagues. I think, Mark, you've done an excellent job of building a professional office that has community support and has confidence in the independence of, the public has confidence in the independence of your office. I concur with what Councilor Clark said about what we see at the table at the Police Commission. I serve on the Police Commission as well, and I can see the results of your good working, but still independent relationship with EPD, and particularly leadership within EPD, and the effective engagement that you have with them regarding improving training and protocols and other ways that you support them in improving their performance for the community. Basically, I see you working tirelessly on improving the quality of your service delivery, your data analysis, and all the other systems that are within the purview of your office, and now even looking to take on some additional tasks and responsibilities, or at least supporting our community with the, your proposal to do some work around mental health and improving mental health services for our community, because that has such an impact on the work that you are trying to do. So, I really want to appreciate you for those things. I have some similar things in terms of things that where we can work harder or improve around community engagement, which is a constant challenge for you, and it's definitely not your fault that it's a constant challenge, it's the nature of the office, I think. So, I agree with attending neighborhood meetings as a way to help with that. And I think also, I know the volunteers on the civilian review board put in a lot of time working on the particular cases, but I also think they could be used with you and cooperatively to do some of that community engagement, and that it all doesn't have to fall on you individually or your staff. And part of that is also working to build trust, trust within communities of color and particularly our immigrant community. And you and I have talked about a little bit about the challenge around that, again, that it's not all on you, but that obviously we need to make that, that effort, and I know that you're willing to do that, so I really appreciate it. And then, I think also utilizing the other resources in the city, which you made mention to earlier, about potentially leveraging some volunteers through the Human Rights Commission. You had mentioned, I think, last year, some challenges around folks coming to your office expecting you to be an advocate for them rather than a neutral auditor, and I think there might be some role for the Human Rights Commission to support that advocacy piece that separates it from you, but still supports the work that you are trying to accomplish in terms of improving service delivery and police practices. So, a lot of good stuff, very pleased with your work, and thank you for everything that you've been doing.
So, now it's your turn, Mark.
I just wanted to say a, a few words. I want to thank my staff, Leah Pitcher and Vicki Cox, they just, they do a tremendous amount of work, and sometimes we don't have the capacity to do everything that we want to do. Two of the things that I, I know over the course of my career in civilian oversight is, two things that cause problems are case management, when there's significant delays in resolution and case management. And so, that's very important to me, because I've seen so many failures in so many places in this nation, and mostly the major cities, but the fact that we're turning most of these cases over in three to six months is a monumental achievement, I think, for everybody involved. The second thing that causes major problems is the critical incidents, and I know Claire and Councilor, Prior, Councilor Saret have had to listen to my rant sometimes about critical incidents because of the way the law is structured in the state, and then the way it's constructed in, in Lane County is, I become detached from that process, and so, when processes don't always meet my expectations, and I appreciate the process of justification, but sometimes you also have the process of elimination that sometimes I think gets missed in those kinds of critical incidents. We're blessed that we have very few. We're blessed oftentimes in critical situations that many officers do show restraint. We're certainly not in Quagmire, a place like Albuquerque is in right now, for example, or even the situations in Portland, so we don't want to be in those situations. But we do recognize the community engagement piece is our next mission, and we are, as I said, I have a draft strategy, and going to meet with some of our community partners to move forward with that. I appreciate the investments councils made in the police department with technology, with the extra body cams and the improvements in the ICVs, we're now able to screen complaints. Of course, it takes a little bit more work and intake, because we don't want to press forward an allegation when we have something that's clear is good behavior, so I do appreciate that. And then, also, the, hopefully, more technology investments in terms of finding out the kind of cases and the stops that go on, because as I think Council Evans stated, there's anecdotes out there, but we'd certainly like to have the data. And finally, then, hopefully, a shift to community-oriented policing. I was looking at arrest statistics from 10 years ago, and it's kind of the same. I mean, the numbers are the same as they were about 10 years ago. I don't know if that's progress or not, but certainly, it's an interesting statistic. Now, the four statistics are different, they're not using flashlights on people anymore, so we're pleased about that. But certainly in terms of perhaps framing a, a more community-oriented policing model, that might be helpful in, in doing that. I know sometimes I don't make people happy, no one wants a group over them, but we do try to be fair and unbalanced, or balanced, sometimes unbalanced, at least according to one review, maybe. But it's an honor and a privilege to work here. I know Denise is going to retire soon, and so the support staff, the backroom staff does an outstanding job, given the, and, again, a great city council. I know the public may or may not agree with all your political views, but I hope they feel rest assured that we're, that you are, they are dealing, and they have elected people who are honest and have great integrity, and that they can trust to do what's best for the city as they were elected to do, so it's a pleasure working with you.
Yes. Based on the performance evaluations and the ratings that you were given, I move that in the event that non-representative employees do not receive a COLA, that the council president approve an amendment to Mark Gistner's contract to provide for a one-time payment in the amount of 3%, or $3,374.58.
Second. Moved and seconded. Mike?
A question to the motion maker. We have discussed in executive session several bullet points. Are we going to take them individually? Is that your intent with motions? Because I just heard one there.
That was going to be my question as well. The motion was, in the event that non-reps do not receive a COLA, then there would be this one-time payment of 3%.
Right.
That suggests that if there is any COLA for non-reps, then there would not be any payment. Is that your intention, or is the intention?
Okay, I'm just working off the draft motion that I received.
Can I?
So, you want me to revise this draft motion?
Can I suggest an alternative motion?
Please.
I move to authorize the council president to approve an amendment to the auditor's contract that, one, would increase the severance pay from two months to three months, two, provide a COLA adjustment equal to whatever COLA adjustment is provided to non-representative employees, and three, provides a merit increase for FY '15 only equal to 3% minus whatever COLA adjustment, if any, is provided under Part II of the motion.
Yeah, that, that's acceptable to me as an alternative.
And you?
Yes.
Okay.
The motion.
So, in that case, I will, I will move to amend, to, to take the third portion there, unless I misunderstood that, that talks about the one-time payment, to remove that portion from the motion, and if I get a second, I'll speak to it.
I'll second it.
I think that Mark is certainly the best police auditor we've had. It is, it's not even a question. He's transformed the office and done, as we've all talked about, an excellent, excellent job in so many ways. Were it up to us to do, you would probably look at greater compensation as reward. The, the challenge that I have is that, no matter how much we want to give you a raise, we can't afford to give you a raise, in my opinion, much like we've done with our representative employees, and asked them to make sacrifices. I, I believe we owe it to them to make the same ask of, of everyone in the process. I don't like doing it, because you do such excellent work, but I believe it's where we are budgetarily, so that's why I've made this amendment.
Okay, so, ready to vote on the motion?
On the amendment, yeah. On the amendment.
On the amendment that Mike put forward. All those in, in favor of the amendment, indicate. One, two, here. Greg or Alan?
No. No.
Okay, so, that would be six in opposition. So, it fails, so we're back to the main motion. All those in favor of the main motion, please indicate. One, two, three, four, or five there, and Alan and, and Greg?
Aye. Yes.
Okay, so, in opposition?
Here. One.
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 Okay, so, it passes. All right, and with that, I think that finishes the business of the day, right? Anything else? Okay, thank you both very much. Thank you, and thank those who work for you in your office for us as well, Mark.
This'll be the last time. The last time at this table.